Sure. Rhonda will take a roll call vote for attendance.
Greg Faris?
Present.
Jason Ferrier?
Present.
Jill Fwaysey?
Present.
John Bailey?
Present.
Anthony Lang?
Present.
Thanks, Rhonda. Before we get to the first agenda item, I want to acknowledge the LSA staff. We've entered 11 weeks. Thank you. You think outside the box. Thank you. The staff has sacrificed. They've collaborated, and our kids are still there. So, from the board, we thank you. The next, the first item on the agenda is public comment. Anyone in the public?
Great. Can you hear me clearly through mask and all?
Yes.
Excellent. Good evening. Thank you, Greg. I could not echo those opening sentiments any better. I'm here tonight. My name is Amy Truxell Dorgan. I'm the parent of two children at LAS. And I'm here representing a group of parents at the school who wanted to make sure that, as you're making continued decisions on the continued education and safety of our students, that you heard our voices loud and clear. So, I have the letter, Rhonda, as I mentioned before. I'll provide it to you in closing, so you have it in full. Dear administrators and school board members, as parents of Lincoln Aikerman students, we're writing to ensure that our voices are heard clearly. We feel strongly that in the absence of confirmed school transmission or major community outbreak, our children should remain in school and receive the benefit of live education. We believe that school with peers provides critical opportunities for social and emotional development. Positive experiences in elementary school set a foundation for successful lifelong learning. We further believe live instruction, particularly for the youngest students, cannot be replicated remotely. That excessive screen time is not healthy nor recommended for school-aged children. And lastly, and probably most importantly, we believe that our students' teachers have the knowledge and experience to navigate live instruction adapted for social distancing. They have risen to the challenge this year and have demonstrated their passion and commitment to our children. We appreciate that the pandemic has presented many challenges. All of our roles and responsibilities are difficult in a myriad ways. During this time, we're looking to you for the leadership of our school and to find creative ways to solve for the difficult challenges now ahead. Over the coming months, we may experience surges of COVID in our community, and thus we need to remove, we will need to move to remote instruction. It is vital that students maximize live instruction until that time, should the situation deteriorate. When we look back on this time, we hope to not reflect just on the difficulties, but also on the successes that our school had in stepping up to the challenge and putting the needs of our children first at the center of all of our decision-making processes. Please take these words to heart and help us and our children's teachers keep everyone safely in school for as long as possible. Thank you for hearing our comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional public comment? Seeing there's no additional public comment at this time, I will close the meeting, or close the public comment. Next item on the agenda are the minutes from October 13th. Open the floor for discussion. Seeing no questions or discussion, can I get a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for Wednesday, October 21st, 2020, as presented.
And can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Rhonda, will you do a roll call vote? That is correct.
I'm sorry.
Greg Faris?
Yes.
Jason Ferrier?
Yes.
Jill Fwaysey?
abstaining.
John Bailey?
Yes.
Anthony Lang?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the principal report.
And welcome, audience. My report was actually very short and simple, and I do realize that a little bit later on in the agenda, Bill, would you prefer that I wait to talk about a plan or? Okay. In our report for this month, and boy, it's been a long month, but a great one, Lincoln Aikerman, thank you for your support, continues to do very, very well. We had a lot of professional development going on with staff this month. Although we are in school, we're very prepared to also go remote if we had to turn on a dime, which we're hoping that we don't, but we're very prepared for that. A lot of our professional development time was coming up with the most up-to-date in Peer Deck, Seesaw, Google Classroom, and then our K-4 staff also in Power School because we're switching gears with report cards, and we're going into Power School to do that. So, we've had a lot of training. We've also had a lot of training with our social-emotional learning initiatives and also our work with John Van Der Els, with our newest staff. He continues to meet with them to bring them up to date with all of our competency-based education goals. So, that's where we are with staff. Our students have been remarkable, focused, active, fun. Our attendance, we did have a glitch about two weeks ago, and believe me, it taught us a lot. It taught us a lot as a school and as a community in how we're dealing with this. And I'm really pleased to say that, as of today, our attendance is pretty close to 100% with both staff and students, and it has been now for 10 days. So, we are really pretty thrilled with that. So, where all systems go, we do take it a week at a time. Our school is focused, peaceful, active, happy. We know that the schedule probably still isn't what everybody wants it to be, but the time that we spend there is high-quality time. And I just want to include a little bit of a story because in my career, it was one of the, those moments as a principal where the hair went up on my neck. I was approached by our K-2 team, and they said, "You know, Beth, if traveling and all of that, we are committed to not traveling anywhere over the holidays. We want our kids in, and we're dedicated to doing that." So, that's the attitude we've had since the get-go in September, and it's an all hands-on-deck approach, and so far, so good. So, that's what I have right now, but I think further down in the agenda, we'll come back and talk about what changes at the end of the trimester and what's ahead. Okay? Thank you. Any questions?
Questions?
I actually have one. Just in terms of the administrative workload for remote planning, has that become more efficient, or are the teachers becoming more adept at preparing for remote?
Absolutely. I mean, that's why we're preparing. We had supplies all ready to go. We have all the technology in place, and then all the preparations for teachers because we know, I'll give you an example, actually. We had a large number of middle school students that were quarantined, and that was a long period of time. And when I looked at how many students were out, I went and approached the team, and I said, "We can just shift gears a little bit here. We can do, if we schedule it a little bit differently for two weeks, one of you can always be remote." And so, that's what we did. So, so far, we haven't lost a step with students in that situation, but when we do go remote, we want to be just as robust. So, that's what we're prepared for.
Do you feel the skill has increased enough where we might be able to not have them as actively prepare the remote and get some of that administrative time back for educational time?
Oh, I think we're there. We're there. We knew that coming off of the spring, you know, what did we learn? What did we need to learn? And then we put our mind to that with just, you know, staff meeting time and afternoon time and things like that. So, we have the know-how within the building between Zach Lemare and his team with all of the technical pieces, but then we have some teachers that have become fairly sophisticated in different programs, and we've used them as in-house PD.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks, Beth.
Thanks, Beth.
Next on the agenda is the financial report.
So, Mr. Farrar is not here this evening because this is the time of the year when Mr. Farrar is at budget committee meetings and other meetings, like all the time, representing us. And so, normally, he takes off sort of some of the November board meetings. But if you have questions on the finance report, you can certainly email him to let him know what those questions are, or give him a call, and he's happy to answer them. And you'll see him again next month, I think.
Thank you, Bill. I'm going to move on since. Next item on the agenda are policies. This is a second read and approval. The policy committee reviewed these late last week, and we moved these forward.
I'm sorry, Greg. These are actually from the prior iteration.
Okay.
Yeah, these aren't the last week ones. We have another group ready to go, but...
Excellent. Anyone have any questions regarding these policies for Dr. Lepini? They're being, go ahead.
Yeah, this is a second read, so therefore, we need a motion and approval of the board.
So, we saw these two weeks ago, right?
You did.
Okay. I thought so.
Yes.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the policies as they're presented.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Rhonda, can we do a roll call?
I think Jason seconded.
Greg Faris?
Yes.
Jason Ferrier?
Yes.
Jill Fwaysey?
Yes.
John Bailey?
Yes.
Anthony Lang?
Yes.
Thank you, Rhonda. Next item on the agenda is our newsletter. Last week, Jill and I met to discuss this and get, for myself, get a better idea of what Jill was talking about regarding content, logistics, things like that. So, Jill, I'll let you take over at this point to give the board an update on this.
Sure. So, I've brought this to everyone's attention previously. I think it is very important that, as a board, we have a little bit of a voice to our community. In the past, it was within the town newsletter. That may still be an option. We haven't explored that, but I'd like us to move forward with an independent newsletter in the meantime, and we can revisit the town option if we decide to at some point. My intent with the newsletter is that we would put them out four times a year. They would follow the basic same structure each time. It would be a two-page, front and back, mailed out to PO boxes in every resident in town newsletter. We would keep it fairly high-level, just to provide the community a general update on happenings and any changes and any particular items, you know, that are going to be open to the public, that they should be made aware of. The one here on your agenda was drafted. It has shifted from an autumn newsletter to a winter newsletter because that's the pace that things happen sometimes. I am quite eager to not shift it to a spring newsletter before it goes out, so I'm hoping that we can have some approval on it. A couple of points that I looked into, to do everyday direct mail, which is how we would mail it out, the cost is about, sorry, where is it? I have all my notes. About $240 to mail it. To do it on 110-pound cardstock, Staples would take three to five days to produce it because it has to go out to their production facility or whatever, not the local spot. And to print 1,200 is $213.36. So, we're looking at around $450 to get this out four times a year. There may be cheaper alternatives. I haven't investigated them. I think that personally, I think it's a fairly reasonable cost for us to be communicating with the community because we have not previously done this. The numbers, we probably don't need to print quite so many because the numbers are just under 1,000 residents and just under 300 PO boxes. So, I have exact numbers, but I'd need to check, given home sales, if those are current. I did have a little sidebar with a select board member, and we can also look into the possibility of using the town email to also distribute. I know we have a select board member in the audience. That's probably news to him, but it's something that I would be willing to explore if there was interest. But all of that said, I would, I would hope to get approval if there are edits to the newsletter, that we could get those in place and get this mailed out, you know, within the next month would be my personal goal for us. Any questions?
Jill, I think this is great. Do you see this, so there's not only a physical distribution, would you, and so, and maybe perhaps we could merge this in with some, you know, town-wide distribution via electronically? Would this live on the board docs, or where would someone, if they wanted to access this later on, you know, where would you envision that?
I think the most appropriate place would probably be the SAU website.
Sure.
But, you know, we haven't discussed that possibility. That's a really good point. Or the LAS website, but typically for school board information, I think the SAU website is where folks go. And I probably should have also said that I'm willing to run point on these, so I will draft them every quarter.
There you go.
That's what we wanted. And give the board and the administration a limited window for feedback. So, I will eagerly hope for your feedback, but if you don't get it within a set period of time, it will still hit the press.
Jill, have you talked to Matt about the funding of this? Do we have money in the budget?
Yeah, not a problem. From what I understand.
And the actual payment to the vendors?
I forgot to ask about that.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'll follow up on that.
And the other thing I have, just only a concern about, is this potentially being a working document. We'll have to figure out a way for other members to input without crossing the right to know law. So, I'm not sure. Is that correct, Rhonda? That can't circulate amongst us.
Right. You can do it, you can do it through the SAU office.
Okay.
If, I think we talked about this at Barrett at the training. If we were to set that up, it's one thing. If you set it up as individual members, it's something different. So, I believe you can accomplish what you're looking to do through the SAU.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
That works.
I mean, alternatively, each of you can edit a document and send it to me individually.
I would just add in bold face, the finances, the money back to the town.
Okay.
And make sure people see that. That's a...
That's pretty awesome.
Yeah. But thank you, Jill, for this. Great effort.
So, do we need to vote on this?
No.
So, I don't have a problem with this.
You can give me a blessing instead of your vote.
I can do that.
I don't have a problem with it. I don't know how the other members feel. If not, please move forward.
Okay. You're good, John?
Jill, I think it's awesome.
Awesome.
And I think you nailed my bio, "To Be Spilled." I'll get it to you by the end of tomorrow. But yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill.
Super. Thanks, everybody.
Next item on the agenda would be our goals for the 2021 school year. First, I'd like to thank everybody for their time and efforts in putting this together. This is a very different format than what we've done in the past. In the past, we have had paragraphs of what our goals would be. This year, we have got a description of the goal and then some strategic objectives for each goal. I did not do much wordsmithing to this. This is how they come in. I don't know if anyone has any questions regarding the format, regarding the presentation of it, and then how we will, what the general description of each goal and objectives are.
First, Greg, I think, I love the format here. Not only is there a definition of an overall objective that we have, I think, or defining paragraph, but the objectives that support that. I would only, I wonder if it makes sense to also look at how we're going to evaluate or, you know, what metrics we're looking for in an effort to assess ourselves and how well we've done to accomplish these goals throughout the, throughout the 2020-21 year. Just a thought, you know? And it involves drilling down with some more granularity, but I think, after reading this, that definitely was in the mindset of the various breakout sessions. You can tell. I love the detailed approach here. So, good start moving forward.
I'd agree with Jason. This is great to see. I think everybody did a really great job in their areas. I did print and mark up a little bit because I have a bad habit of doing that. So, I do think that there is some clarification that can be gained in how some of it's written. And with those clarifications, some of the metrics will become clearer. You know, as we tighten up the language we use, it's going to become a little bit more evident what measurement might evaluate our ability to obtain those goals. But they were mostly fairly minor changes, nothing substantive.
So, Jay, I think it's a good question. David, I would ask you a question regarding this, if you don't mind? And correct me, David, if I'm wrong. We as an SAU have not gotten to that overall global goal or goal with the objectives. Am I correct in that to a certain extent?
Are we, are we talking about the competency-based?
Well, just in general, because where I'm going with this is, how do we develop what Jason's looking for to measure ourselves, to see how we're performing with these goals and the objectives?
Well, I think, I think, actually, I would kind of go in the direction that Jill went, where you just want to kind of wordsmith in a way that articulates you want to do this by achieving X, Y, and Z, and, and the tighter language you use to define those.
Okay.
I think you put yourself in a better spot.
Okay.
I hope that answers your question.
No, it does.
The question I ask principals with respect to their goals is, what would this look like if you accomplished it?
Okay.
So, that's a, that's a starting point, right?
Yeah.
So, if you, if you got to the end of this and you said, "Wow, we really nailed this," what would it look like?
What we could also do, Greg, is, is have, say, a quarterly meeting on these, where every three months, we're, we're talking about what we've done so far to achieve the goals. Because some of these will wind up evolving over time, because we'll go down one path and we'll realize halfway through that, you know, what we thought was important isn't as important as what we learned along the way, and now we actually want to, you know, dodge right a little bit.
So, you almost want to make it a live document.
Exactly. And I think if we do those quarterly reviews, both will hold ourselves accountable to accomplishing what we wanted to and have the ability to, you know, dodge and parry as we need to. John, would you, do you envision those milestone meetings? Would that be something that Beth and her staff comes in, a select few, and they speak to some of the things that they've? I know you've talked to them about that, doing that before you started to implement that. Is that what this would be? Do you roll that into this?
You could do one of two things. You could have to be part of the regular board, where everyone gets like about 15 minutes to go over what they've done, maybe a quick two or three-slide PowerPoint, whatever the case may be. Get feedback from both other board members and the administration. Because I think also, some of this will wind up going upstream too, because a lot of it to me is, as we get new members on the board, and it's not just here, it's elsewhere. It's trying to get people up to speed so that we're all doing the same thing as effectively as possible and working in unison to do so. So, I think that would help too. So, we could either do that, or if we needed to have more time than that, we could do working sessions.
Okay. If I may, I think there's also opportunity there in that model to dovetail with larger SAU initiatives, meaning that our, our reports can come in. You can hear what's going on across the SAU and play off that as well.
Yeah.
All of that being said, what about a January work session to begin developing how we want to start reviewing this quarterly? Or do you just want to begin quarterly reviewing it?
No, I mean, we're going to want to be consistent in how we approach it. So, I think that makes sense, but I don't want to put ourselves in a position that we're spending so much time thinking about how we'll review it and not conducting the review.
Fair enough.
Right? I think, once we've tightened up these goals and objectives too, we'll be in a position between us, you know, with the administration, with Beth and her staff, to start to outline what are the activities that are, that are underway or planned that attend to a lot of these, because we're not going to know what a lot of those are.
True.
Our, our hope is that we've created the environment that will foster a lot of these things happening, but they're happening well outside of, you know, what we're currently, what we're daily engaged in regularly.
I, I agree, as long as our goals can't be their goals.
I don't think...
Okay.
I don't think that's representative of the way here.
May I put you on the spot to do some wordsmithing then?
Sure. Yeah, I can do that. Like now, while we're...
No, 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 no.
Pass after that and just kidding.
Can we vote to accept pending edits? Or do we need to have the edits before we do a final vote? So, vote to accept it?
Well, you'd be accepting them in concept, so, I mean, you might do that.
Okay.
And that would allow you to move forward with edits and measurements and those kinds of things.
Any additional questions?
I have one. Bill, how are the, I'm just, just for curiosity, how do these compare to the other districts, would you say? Do they align as drastically different?
I think they certainly align. I, I think they're, as Greg said, the other district's goals tend to be much more in the format of what you, what you inherited, right? What you saw coming out of last year.
Gotcha.
But in terms of the, of these areas of board focus, I think they very much align.
Great. Thank you. So, with that said, I'd like to, why don't we, if I can get a motion to accept the proposed goals, Jill, then if you can wordsmith these and get those back to me, and then we'll spread, distribute them out to the board, if you mind?
I would say, if you mind?
Yeah, no, go ahead.
So, yeah, you're, adopt the proposed school board goals for 2021 in concept.
So, you know, I'll, I'll make a motion to adopt the proposed school board goals for the 2020-21 school year in concept. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Can we do a roll call, Rhonda?
Greg Faris?
Yes.
Jason Ferrier?
Yes.
Yes.
John Bailey?
Yes.
Anthony Lang?
Yes.
Thank you, Rhonda. Next item on the agenda is on our new business and its recording secretary stipend.
Yes. So, over the last month or so, we've taken a look at the recording secretary stipends in each of our districts, and we're leaving the high school, which pays more than the elementary schools, out of this conversation. But we found that we have four different rates in four different elementary districts. And so, we have a range of anywhere from, I think it's $84, I'm looking at Rhonda, $84 to your $118. And so, in your budgets for next year, we've recommended that that be increased to $125 per meeting and that it be standardized across all of our districts. The other three districts have all voted to do so. And with this motion, we're, I'm sorry, with this, they've all agreed to support this motion. With this motion, that would actually put that into place as of November 1st. So, that's the recommendation, to move to $125 from your $118 rate effective for this meeting.
Questions? Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to increase the stipend for school board recording secretary from $118 to $125 effective November 1st, 2020.
Rhonda, can I get a roll call vote?
I'll second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
Greg Faris?
Yes.
Jason Ferrier?
Yes.
Jill Fwaysey?
Yes.
John Bailey?
Yes.
Anthony Lang?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is voting at LAS for the, for 2021 in March and beyond. I see Ed is here to represent the select board. Mark Lane had reached out to me to get this on the agenda with the idea of looking and considering Lincoln Acreman for the March vote. I think it's becoming a little bit more difficult to take place at the town hall, and they were wondering if we would consider this. Ed, I don't know if you have anything to add to that?
The moderator has indicated, moderators want to kind of grab JP Palmpe on. In federal elections, we have a limited amount of space in the town hall based upon, and those numbers are determined by the size of the community. So because we're growing, and the town hall doesn't seem to be growing with us, we've needed to adjust all kinds of spacing. So there was a conversation among the board last year regarding trying to get to Lincoln Acreman, and then COVID kind of indicated that we would have to adjust to something different than that for this year, and we did do that. But it's entirely inconvenient at the present time. I wasn't in favor of moving it, because I think when you move a polling place, you disrupt polling results. But I think at this point, it's been pretty clear by JP that space is very limited. The number of people in town is going to, we're going to end up having to have more polling sites and voting sites, and we're probably not going to be able to make it. We do realize that this can cause an issue. Obviously, we had four elections this year. It can cause an issue for school, canceling school and the like. So we're, and we're aware of the present state of the gym. So we're thinking possibly the cafeteria, but we're asking for an opportunity to take a look at that and for JP to look at it and to kind of make some judgment of whether or not it would work for us. And then for all of you people to, if it does work for us, signify that that would be probably a no school day, and that'd be a day in March every year for the town elections. And then subsequently, on the even numbered years, state and federal elections.
So you're looking for it for permanent, which is fine. I'm all for it, I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, I think once we make the move, I think that's the way to go, because we're not going to try to play, okay, where is the election today?
Yeah, exactly.
So, so that's what we're seeking. And JP, I don't know if you have anything to add to that, what our issues are, but it's a space orientation.
Does it have any, let's discuss at any point what the requirements are to, for our vote location?
So we're looking to investigate it.
Okay.
Get down, do some measuring, we'll try to figure it out and see if that space works at least, you know, while we're dealing with COVID, and then move back to you for approval. But we didn't want you to, we wanted to kind of know whether or not it's an opportunity to do so before we spend any time dealing with it. We have until March, obviously, but we need to post that warrant. Obviously, I think it's six weeks ahead of time, so we'll have to have a polling place determined in the next month or so.
I would think that the cafeteria would be perfect. It's, I think it's triple the size of what the current town hall is. It's got double, two entrances and exits, so I think you could get a nice flow of people going through. Before I bring this to the board for discussion, I'd like to know if Beth or Bill have any thoughts or comments. I know we've already voted on our schedule for next year.
Well, this is this, this is.
Or this year.
This year's calendar.
Yeah, this year.
And I don't remember, is that a, is that a PD day for us? It is a PD day for us, okay.
Because I believe, isn't the rest of the district a lot of it's like, voting in their school?
We only have voting, I'm sorry, we only have voting now at Winnicott.
Okay.
Actually, and actually, that's only certain elections. A lot of that now is even over at Hampton Academy.
Oh, okay.
North Hampton has used it from time to time, but most of the time, that's at the town hall as well.
Okay.
They are also interested in going back to the school.
Okay. I am in favor of this. Beth, any, do you have any thoughts?
I mean, the school belongs to the town, and I'm sure we can work it out if the year's schedule doesn't quite match, we can create that batch in the fall.
Okay. You know, I, from a board perspective, one thought I have, I think this is, this is a good opportunity for us. One of the items that we kept running into during the renovation phase was the taxpayers in general don't get to see the building unless they have kids in the building, and this would bring the taxpayers into the building. And I think that's a good thing. That's my two cents there. And at board, any?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to, I think there's an excellent opportunity as well, if it's happening in March, that, you know, at that time, for people to say, why is this not happening in the cafeteria? And really drive home the point that, you know, there is a valid reason that people can't congregate there. So I don't see any downside of doing this, especially the way that the calendar seems to line up with off days on election anyway.
Just curious, if on election days, we'd have to, school would have to be excused? Would it have to, I mean, I'm just curious, because we do have enough exits and entrance that we could isolate it from where the children are, safety wise.
I mean, this specific year, I would mean that cafeteria is currently a learning space. So if you had voting this year in March, I mean, the first thing I would ask is that we make sure there is enough time to get the place cleaned, because we've been so strict, which is why I think we're doing pretty well.
Yeah.
Beyond that, I'm not sure about that. I think it just would involve more people and more discussion.
Yeah, okay. Sounds like this year it's kind of a non-issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good timing.
I think it's, I think it makes sense. I always grew up voting in schools.
Yeah, I support it as well, Greg.
So Ed, what would the next steps be then?
Well, I think JP will want to take a look at the site. He, I think he has to look at the site and make some determination, maybe come back with a formal request proposal at your next, at your December board meeting and get approval. That way, we're still within the bounds of getting it under the warrant appropriately and making sure everybody's aware.
Okay.
That that's the date and signifying. I'm sure there'll be still people that, you know, by habit, you know?
Right, absolutely.
I was driving down Route 1 the other day, I don't come this way all that often, and I took a right on Park Lane, like I was going to the high school. I had no reason to come down here at all. So, I mean, habits do, they do, they do hang with you for a while, but, so I think, I think, you know, as much information we can get out to people and let them know that, and try to make it a little easier. We had to put in a ramp, and we had to do all kinds of things that.
Right, yeah.
Were difficult. And quite frankly, JP and I have had enough work, and we don't need any more, right?
What's the date of our next meeting? Our December meeting?
Should be right this, December 1st.
December 1st.
December 1st, okay.
No, 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 no. December.
December 8th.
Okay. So JP, you would need access to the school, and you can coordinate that with Beth, I assume, for, you know, and then we'll vote December 8th. If, if it makes sense and appropriate, if, assuming it's approved, it can, it can hold the newsletter to that week. I mean, that's one way of also helping get the word out. Obviously, we'll get the word out.
That's fine.
A dozen ways, but.
Yeah, communication's an issue in Hampton Falls, it has been for a long time, and so your, your attempt to try to bridge that lack of communication between one neighbor and the next is a valid attempt to, you know, get the word out there. This would be another one of those things where we, we want to get as much information as possible.
I think even saying that we're looking into it to get the awareness out there without holding the newsletter would suffice. I mean, as, you know, something from this, that the board has agreed with the selectmen and the moderator to explore the opportunity to use the school as a polling place, just to know that we're thinking about it, you know, even if it's not decided, you know, we can even put something, you know, may not be, you know, based on regulation plausible, but.
It might hold, see how the chats go.
Yeah, for sure.
So JP and Beth, you'll coordinate? Okay. Ed, no problem.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Ed Beatty?
Ed Beatty? Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Next item on the agenda would be reopening plans for the second trimester.
Thanks. Let me say a couple of words and then turn this over to Beth. So we, we did another set of surveys, and the issue in particular, and I want to thank all the people who got back to us on those, and we have great data. Beth and her team have done a great job with those data, and I think you're really going to like what you hear from her tonight. The one piece that I want to comment on is the set of questions we asked about Thanksgiving and the December vacation. So based on those data, we're not going to make a recommendation, based on those data and some of the input or feedback I've gotten from, from some board members in individual conversations, we're not going to make a recommendation about those weeks following Thanksgiving and December break. You should know, and I think I've said this to you in an email, that there are school districts that have gone remote for six weeks because of that. Dover, Spalding among them have gone remote for six weeks because of their anticipation of the number of families that are going to be impacted, families and employees that are going to be impacted by the directive, I guess is the right word, from DHHS, that if you leave New England, you quarantine for two weeks upon your return. You should know also that the commissioner has asserted that teachers are covered, covered, not my word, his, on this issue, because they are considered essential workers and therefore do not need to quarantine for two weeks following their return from being out of New England. We've asked him to put that in writing. We've asked him to give us that information so that we can share it with people. He has yet to do so. We've been looking for that for four weeks now. And so right now, you know, we're a little bit in limbo. We, you, I think we shared some of those data with you. We do have some challenges ahead with staff and families in that period of time. And by the way, let me say that whether people are considered essential workers or not, right? We know that travel and people seeing other people in their homes and traveling to other people in their homes could cause us problems. We could be in a situation following Thanksgiving where we are going remote in individual schools, in individual grade levels, as Beth said earlier, just because of people's travel and their, their lack of availability to come in and teach, or kids' lack of availability to come to school. No specific recommendation on that tonight, other than to put a big asterisk next to it and say, we're going to face a set of challenges, we believe, in those weeks following Thanksgiving. So that's my part. And Beth, if you would talk about what will happen to the LAS plan during the second trimester?
You know, as Dr. Lupini said, when all of that, all of the survey results came back, looking at it and looking at it with other administrators, I knew that we, the potential for us to stay in school is there. What we're doing in school is really working. Every Friday, when I write to our staff, I ask them to, this is not the time to let up when you think you're doing really well, it's not the time to start to relax what we're doing. We have to maintain what we're doing with all of our protocols. Traveling's a little bit different type thing. I think through the staff, I think we have very few travelers, so for us to stay in school through Christmas is, that's what we're doing. We want to stay in as long as possible. We want to get to June, let me be really frank, and we think we can do that. We take each case as, as it comes. We have all those protocols in place. So, you know, we did have a large group that was quarantined, like I said a little earlier. It taught us a lot with how we handle that, how we're dealing with it, and we got through that actually fairly smoothly. So our plan is to stay in school and take each case as we get it. In terms of students coming back from the Remote Learning Academy at the end of the trimester, which ends on December 4th, the second trimester starts December 7th. What I have done is actually, I've had plenty of time to think about it since the school started, and I knew it was a real possibility. We had a couple of grades that were pushing right up against the numbers that we could handle, and I've actually been able to recreate where people are in the building, so I've given those two classes bigger spaces. And we've already moved one of them, just because we needed to get the technology in the room prepared as well. And then the second one will probably be moving right before Thanksgiving. But we can handle that. We do have spaces, and it's just a matter of me moving it around while we're still keeping pods safe. So, you know, as COVID throws these challenges at us, I think we can handle most of them. I don't, I know there are a million scenarios with COVID with what could send you out or a group out, but I think the way that we have our pods set up and the way that we're taking care of our pods in terms of safety, I don't see the whole school going out at once, unless we have a real major, major problem. But if we have to send a pod out at any given time, I see it for the 14 days, and that's it. And that's why we're prepared to go remote. But our goal is to stay in school, we're dedicated to it, we know it's best for kids, and, you know, I'll borrow the motto from the 1970s, hell no, we won't go. So, that's where we stand. But, you know, our families, I just want to give kudos to our families, they're really helping us out. We know we depend upon each other to make this work, and that's what we're doing. So thanks, thanks to all the families out there that are doing that for us. So, did I say a bad word? I'm sorry.
To summarize, Beth, you, we had a couple of challenges because of our L.A., a couple of students coming back. They presented some, some minor issues in terms of size of some groups, but you've managed to find larger rooms to move those.
Found larger rooms to do that, so those moves are all in place, but it's not going to affect education.
Thank, Beth, first, thank you. My kids love being in school.
We love having them.
Especially my daughter in eighth grade, I, you know, it's huge. So I'm thrilled that they can be.
Yeah, and some clubs and things like that, teachers are starting to talk about that.
Yep.
You know, we've been devoid of student activity, although the weather has been in our favor, so kids have been very physically active, which has been incredibly healthy. But now we're thinking like, okay, what can we do before school? So some of our, our eighth graders with Mission Impact, they've started before school. Some of the other groups would like to do similar things, so that's the time we have, and we'll, we'll continue to think in that, along those lines. In terms of some of the other activities, you know, I know floor hockey has been incredibly important to the Lincoln Acreman crew at, after the basketball season, but I think we're going to incorporate that into our PE classes and do it outside on a parking lot space, so that we can keep it safe.
Great. I do have a couple of questions.
Sure.
When we had those large numbers out a few weeks ago, have you thought about what threshold number of students need to be out to make those accommodations, other than, you know, I don't know if there is a threshold number, but.
There is, I have to, I have to have a teacher freed up.
Okay.
So that, that would be a cohort.
Got it, okay. And, and the next, my related question, the reason I'm wondering that, is because I am, I'm very much in support of keeping the ship, you know, plowing ahead. I have some concerns about incentivizing people to lie when they come back from holidays and putting us, the community at risk. So, you know, if there are not accommodations, and they don't, and they feel fine, and they were out for a day, in another, I'm just, I'm worried about that. It's a real challenge, we've seen it, and I just sort of want to raise that concern.
Yes, and, and so are we.
Yeah, there.
I mean, early on, I had parents from another, I'll say this, I had a few parents from another district call me objecting to this rule, which I didn't create, DHHS did, and suggesting to me that they would not tell us the truth, so that their kids could continue, could continue in school. And that would be troubling and difficult if it, if it ended up putting us in remote at a school or across the SAU. We've said from the beginning that this, and Beth, we learned it a couple of weeks ago in your situation, we've learned it in other schools, that this whole model really relies in your situation, we've learned it in other schools, that this whole model really relies on everybody doing their part, right?
It does.
Whether it's the screening, whether it's being honest with respect to symptoms, or not feeling well, or whatever, all of those things are what keeps us open.
And I'll be honest with you, Jill, and people can pass this word, it's a lot easier to be honest and to be quarantined for 14 days, which goes by more quickly than you probably think, than it is to infect a whole group of innocent children and families. So, we have a lot of siblings in the school, as you know, some of you have kids in each of our pods, and if you get it in a family, then it's in the school.
Yeah.
So, I would hope people would not lie, I mean, I like to trust, trust people, and I don't know, it's just, it'll be so much easier if we're all just honest and take care of each other.
Yes.
Do you also have the final, have the final commitments for the next trimester?
I think we're close.
Okay.
I think we're close. I think some families, and rightfully so, and we respect everybody's decisions and what is best for their family, but I think as COVID shifts and changes around us, I think some families have different thoughts and feelings about that, depending on their family members and their own health, and that's what's most important, is their own health. If it's not healthy for them to be in school, then we'll provide the Remote Learning Academy.
So, the numbers are firm enough that it won't affect your planning?
Well, I am okay in many grades. Like I said, I have two or three grades where I'm pushing up against those numbers, and I do have enough spaces to be able to move within that. After that, I'll take it as it comes, but I think we're, I think we're in good shape for the second trimester, with those students coming back.
Great, excellent. Thank you.
Beth, I have to second Jill's comment. Thank you so much for all the effort, and the teachers too, just amazing work here. As far as the staffing, do you feel confident that you've been given adequate or realistic numbers as who's going to not be able to attend to their classrooms, and those are going to be firm numbers, or...
I don't have that firmly yet.
Okay, because obviously, that's a huge impact for you, and, you know, even if the kids stay steady state, no numbers change there, so, will you, are you prepared to pivot and move with that situation, or...
With a teacher out?
Yes.
That's why we spent so much time preparing for remote learning if we needed it.
Gotcha.
And if we need it, we'll be ready for it.
Beth, I'm echoing, thank you for acting on what is happening and not what could happen, keeping us in school, I think it's very important. Based on the recent incident, are there any plans to better communicate the if-then scenarios in terms of families, so that I would know if my one child gets in close contact, what would happen to the other children? It seemed that there were, there was a misunderstandings along the way from different parent groups, and I think that as much as we can get in front of it and say, based on our experience, we've learned X could be helpful to the community.
Well, I, I mean, Heather Boyd, our school nurse, has done a remarkable job this year, she's done a ton of communicating. I think for some families, if you haven't kept up with everything we do send out, it's tough to hear quarantine. And I think that was the learning curve, because I think some parents said, okay, here it is, but it didn't have to be disastrous, it was just a matter of accepting it and moving on with it, and we got through it. I do think that Heather is constantly trying to communicate, and I can definitely have her do it again if you feel that's beneficial to people, but it was hard to hear at first. It, you know, it was almost like, oh, this can't happen here, but it can, it's real, we all know that, and we all know that it surrounds us, but I think if, you know, people are just honest and you are doing your part, that's all we can do. And if we get a situation like that, then the protocol that Heather has to take, you know, then it starts to travel through DHHS, and I think that's where people were confused. It's not, it's not in our hands completely, you know, we have to hand that off, and then the contact tracing starts, and then those calls start, so, that was a learning curve, definitely, absolutely.
Yeah, the thing I would add to that is, we, so across the SAU, I think we're up to a six or seven situation, some of which you may know about, others, I'm glad you don't, right? So, and every one of them, because of that DHHS, people are calling me and saying, why are you quarantining us? It's really not us.
Yeah.
It's really our work with DHHS. Now, we have some basic protocols and some of their basic protocols that we publish, but what I've learned is that every situation has its own sort of tentacles, its own differences to it, and those are harder to communicate to everyone, because they're different for each situation.
Yeah, and I understand there's a delicate balance between over-communicating and under-communicating.
Well, and there's also a delicate balance for me, I don't want to tell people how to parent or run their lives, it's like, these are the protocols we all have in place, me included, I mean, I don't want to be ill, I don't want to get anybody ill, and I'm going to take care of you if you take care of us, and that's all we can do, and then people are going to get sick. And then we have lots of kids that are out with colds and sore throats and all that type of thing, and I, to be honest with you, have found parents to be very, very responsive to our health check in the morning. Today, we broke our record, if anybody wants to know that, we had all 100% of our health checks in by 8:22, so, we keep track of these things.
I wasn't the one.
I mean, it's, you know, people, people know, I feel like the COVID cop's standing out there with my clipboard in the morning, but, you know, those things, those little things are important, and we're paying attention to them.
Heather's done a wonderful job.
Yes, we have a bulletin board that, I will send home photos of it, big, huge board, that, I mean, kids wrote her thank you notes, and this, that, and the other thing, so it's just a thank you, Mrs. Boyd.
That's great.
Yeah.
She's been very responsive, and, yeah.
And it's very difficult for her. You know, I know people get angry, and she's not used to that, I'm a little more used to that, but it's, that was the learning curve, it's, you can't tell us to quarantine, and she's not.
How is she dealing with that? Because I know, you know...
She's much better.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
You know, Heather and I, when we see each other in the morning, it's like, Heather, let's have a really boring day today. We've had a week's worth, so, that's good.
Beth, you keep saying you're used to yelling. Is everything okay?
Everything's great. Actually, our school is really quiet, it's an adjustment, but as soon as they get outside, there's loads of mask breaks, there's loads of activity, there's loads of laughter. Our kids have been absolutely remarkable.
Awesome.
Again...
And can I just mention one other thing? There's been zero discipline, zero. I just find that to be, I know they're distanced, and they're not poking each other, and they're not, there's zero, they, we have 180 very happy kids. I mean, there's, there's some parent at home with a child melting down in front of them, saying, what are you doing, am I? But, you know, when you look at the whole big picture, it's, we, we're having a good year with what we're dealt with.
So, Beth, while you're there, let me just say, we, I think I can speak for all of us, constantly say that no matter what it is that we come, we come up with in the data, or whatever parents respond, we're always 99.9% sure that Beth's going to find a way to make it work. And that's the routine, are going to figure out some way to make that work within their model, and we really appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, there's always a way. But I will pass your compliments on to our staff, I'm sure they'd love to hear it, thank you.
Beth, before we leave, so just, I'm curious, as we get into the regular winter cold and flu season, for the individual students where it doesn't affect the whole cohort, but someone's getting a cold or has the regular flu, and they don't know what it is at that point in time, do they transfer to the Remote Learning Academy, or do they just treat it as if they're absent there, in touch with their regular teacher and classes?
I can even speak from experience on that one. Yeah, we're treating it as if it's an absence, but our staff has been very responsive to that, and first of all, if a child is sick in their home, I mean, we allow them to be sick and get better. So, we're not on top of them with work if they're not feeling well, but when they do, a parent, a lot of parents have kept a child home an extra day or two just to be safe, a lot of parents have gone and had their children tested to also have some peace of mind. But I would say all of our staff have been very responsive to a child that's been out.
It's not transferring from one learning environment to the other?
No, that's a different school, different teachers, so...
That's what I was asking.
Right. But we've been able to handle that so far, and, because the cohort groups are really small, so it's doable.
Okay.
And we'll continue to do that.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Beth.
Thank you, Beth.
That being said, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the administration's recommendation for student instruction to continue as is, beginning with the second trimester, starting December 7th. Is that good?
That's good.
All right?
I would love to second that.
Jay, you second that?
I do.
Rhonda, when you get to it, we can do a roll call.
That's December 7? Yes.
Yes.
Jill and Jason?
Yep.
Red Paris?
Yes.
Jason Ferri?
Yes.
Jill Swinsey?
Yes.
John Bailey?
Yes.
Yes, to be frank.
Yes.
Beth, welcome to the conference.
Thank you.
We have no need for non-public this evening.
Excellent. So, before we end, John, I want to talk about the superintendent's search real quickly, I don't want to go too deeply into it. John and I have been through this, this is going to be a very long, arduous process. This is also going to be very frustrating, and I can only imagine what roadblocks or what we're about to embark on. So, if at any point anybody needs to talk, questions, please reach out. If I don't have an answer, John doesn't have an answer, we'll get it, or we'll put you in front of someone who can get you an answer. This is going to, going to require a team effort, and, you know, we'll get through it, but it's going to be tough. The final thing I want to say is more of a question, after last night's meeting, there was a question about anyone having interest participating in the search committee. Does anyone have any interest?
What is the timeframe?
As far as the commitment?
Is there a number of temporary seats at the moment?
As far as the commitment?
Yeah, I mean, Anthony and I are in temporary positions at the moment here.
Well, so, the interim role, that will start, hopefully, to fill that by the end of this calendar year. I suspect the permanent superintendent's position, that will begin in January. I can tell you the last time, it was a six-month process.
Well, Greg, I'm interested, maybe we could talk a little bit more outside of this, and then, you know, just to confirm.
Okay.
But I'm definitely interested.
Okay.
I mean, I'm interested to have the same, you know, reservations as Jill, but would trust Jason 100% should everything check out to speak on my behalf, so...
Okay. Jay, I'll reach out to you. What I'll do is I'll send an email to everyone and kind of give you an overview of how the process went down last time. Fortunately, I was the chair of both the joint board and the search committee. I know what we're about to take on, and it's a long process. So, let me put that together, send it out to everybody, just to give you an idea, and then if you're still interested, let me know. John, I don't know if you want to add to it, you were a part of that process the last time?
Yeah, I mean, I would think that the search for the interim will be relatively quick, and the search for the long-term superintendent will be a far longer, more involved process.
Okay. So, let me do that. That being said, we are, we have our next meetings, they are listed below in section nine, I'm not going to list them off, because all of you can read. And so, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Rhonda, roll call.
Red Paris?
Yes.
Jason Ferri?
Yes.
Jill Swinsey?
Yes.
John Bailey?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good seeing you. Thank you, WHS staff, we appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you for doing this.
Nice to see you all.